Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Vator City Council. It is June 18th, 2024, 6:04 PM. Roll call.
Mayor Shaw?
Here.
Sheila Goff?
Here.
Jason Haley?
He has, is not here and has not given us any heads up.
Randy Hall?
Here.
Mike Parsons?
Here.
Michael Ferguson?
Here.
We have a quorum. Pledge of Allegiance.
Please follow me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a reason, justice for all.
Waste water plant outfall project, the pre-design report is ecology approved and the final design is in progress. So since we have some of those designs, we'll make sure council has those. McMurphy Park grant with our CO, the initial face-to-face pre-presentation is complete. There'll be a final presentation in August and eventually we'll hear back in probably October or November, how we rated on the state level. Comp plan, climate planning. The Parks Board is going to be working with the planner on the climate planning aspects of the comp plan. And of course, they'll also be working with the planner for the Parks Master Plan update. That's a requirement of the comp plan. Their next meeting is this week on the 20th. The planning committee, this meeting this week has been canceled. Fourth of July city fireworks, they'll be starting at 10 o'clock on the fourth. The shooter is estimating a 30 to 35 minute show. Bring something comfortable to sit in. And fireworks cleanup on July 5th. Volunteers needed to coordinate and execute the cleanup party. I know Mike Parsons and Michael Ferguson had talked about that. And I think it sounds like you guys are, we'd be out there and part of the, part of the team.
I cannot, but somebody can use my.
That's right.
Stuff.
So you've got some equipment that'll help, help with that.
I'm trying to get out there this week and suck up a bunch of that grass.
That'll be great.
That's out there and hopefully get it cleaned up so that we don't have to do that with the fireworks.
Yeah, same. Thank you. And then lastly, there was some, there was a vehicle at McMurphy yesterday that was doing some cookies out in the grass and stuff. And so we have some pictures of that and been forwarded off to the law enforcement. We'll make sure council gets some photos of that vehicle as well. It's pretty distinct, one of a kind. So spread that around and try to find it. Unfortunately, the cameras weren't able to pick up the license plate, so.
Has it been put on Facebook yet?
Not yet. I just got it this afternoon.
What, what kind of vehicle?
It's a. Yeah, it's a 2003 to 2005 Hyundai Accent. It's kind of a blue-green color, has roof racks and a big, like a black logo, demon logo thing on the hood. It's pretty distinct.
Saw him yesterday over by the tracks.
See, they're around. Only Hyundai with a demon logo on it in town. So if he could get the license plate, that'd be, that'd be great. Agenda approval. I don't have any changes at this time.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda for city council meeting on June 18th, 2024.
You have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the meeting agenda for June 18th, 2024. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Hall, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I am sorry, council, I forgot the council reports section of the agenda right before the agenda approval. Did any members of the council have any reports tonight? Moving on to minutes approval.
Making motion that we approve the city council meeting minutes for June 5th, 2024.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the meeting minutes from June 5th, 2024. Do we have a second? Second, Mr. Hall, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
I make a motion to approve the end of the gym total 2024, 27,000, 090, A3, and total for gym, 54,726, 0890.
Looks like a nine, 90.
90.
A motion by Mr. Hall to approve the vouchers as stated. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Parsons. Any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. We have a special report tonight from Chief Underdahl from the Fire District. And I heard, thank you for the good news regarding the insurance rating as well.
Yes, we just recently received our WSRP rating, which is the Washington Survey and Rating Bureau, which comes every four years to every fire district and fire department. And we've used the district on three different levels of the quality and equipment and the training of the fire department, the codes that the city has, and then the water system that the city has. With that being said, we had our last inspection four years ago. This was just recently completed and we are still at a rating of a six. One being an ultimate perfect rating and ten being the worst. For a district of our size and our capability, it's an excellent rate. Winlock, which I'm also the fire chief of, has a six as well. Most of the rural fire agencies have anything higher than, higher than six. We have a six and we're proud of that. So, but that rating will, what that does is that affects the insurance rate to your homeowner's policy at this time. Changes. So you shouldn't see any changes to your homeowner's policy. So based upon, so that's a very good news for us to have and wanted to let you know. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that. So today I wanted to talk to you about the proposal that we want to submit to the Board of County Commissioners for two tenths of one percent sales tax to go to funding of the 911 center. So in addition to be your fire chief here in Vator, Ryderwood, and 11 square miles of that district income. So I'm also the full-time fire chief in Winlock, District 15, which has 42 square miles. And then on top of those other duties, I am the chairman for the CUC Committee. The CUC Committee is the combined users group that oversees the funding of the 911 center. So the 911 center here in Lewis County is funded by tax dollars. They have some tax comes in, go down about $821,000 revenue comes into the 911 center. Their annual budget is anywhere from 3.5 to 3.6 million dollars to fund the center with operations and everything that goes on with that. There's also a million and a half dollars in the equipment repair and upgrade fund that we are also looking at because of the fact that the equipment at 911 centers operating with. Would say that, I think it comes from the 19, that's how bad it is. Yeah, that's, yeah, that was similar for like, and so we have a limited, limited range on our radios. We get, we have a lot of being overridden by Mason County. Their fire agent system overrides us at times. It's so bad that when we try to, we can't get to our own center. Our radio equipment is to the extent that we can talk over one mile apart from each other. If I was trying to talk to somebody on this radio in Ryderwood, it would not happen at all. So one of the things that we were looking at at the CUC Committee, and the CUC Committee is made up of fire employees. Law enforcement has their, their percentage of what they owe and fire has a percentage of what they owe. So the dispatch center is broken down into 75% of the use of the dispatch center is used by law enforcement, sheriff's office, Naperville Police Department, Shea and Centralia, many of the police department. To include a portion of that by the City of Vator. City of Vator pays the sheriff's office a contract fee, right services for you. But a part of that fee for the City of Vator is $20,000, $20,347 a year of your tax dollars plus the center. You're also, your tax dollars for District 20 is $19,355. So if you were to combine those two numbers, $40,224 is provided by taxpayers. And one of the things that, as myself being a taxpayer in this district, that we always want to make sure that our tax dollars are being wisely spent. We are funding the 911 center. The reason that we're asking the commissioners, and strictly this is asking the Board of County Commissioners to place this on the ballot, was placed on the ballot last year and failed. But place it on again for the two tenths of one percent, which is 20 cents of $100 purchase to go towards funding the 911. Our estimation of some of those numbers is right around $4 million if that was to pass. We're hoping with this, not to 100% eliminate user fees, but considerably reduce user fees from the taxpayers. And the way I look at it, and especially for me being in Winlock and hot on the freeway, dealing with a truck that's coming from Portland to Seattle, has no vested interest in paying taxes in our district, is tying up all their resources on fire, on I-5. What we're asking is for the people that visit and spend their money in our area, that tax dollars, the 20 cents off of $100 goes to fund that center so that everybody pays that uses the system. So if I'm coming from Coos Bay, Oregon, and I'm going to visit my aunt in Seattle, and I come across an accident, you know, I want to take a shortcut to Wildwood Road, and I find an accident on State Route, you know, 506 and Winlock Vator Road, I call 911. If I stop and spent any type of taxable, or bought something that was taxed, contributing to that use of that system. And that's what we're asking for is overall use of the system by everybody. Now, taxes, nobody likes, nobody wants, but two tenths of one percent goes strictly to fund the 911 center is what we're looking at. Looking at reducing the amount of money that the taxpayers pay, using that money that you paid to us to buy equipment, update trucks, buy modern equipment. And some, some agencies are looking at even putting on more staff. So we're, we've also have to decide how much contribution that the users have to pay. But we want to significantly reduce the amount of money that is paid by the taxpayers. So the reason I visit as the chairman of the CUC, the, we attended the Board of County Commissioners meeting today. There is a political action committee set up, Citizens for a 911, that is going to handle all public outreach. As you can probably imagine, it's a tight, it's a tight line for us. I can't come and tell you to vote yes or no in uniform. That is, I cannot support them. The only I can ask you to do is consider supporting it from the electeds to support, send a letter of support to the county commissioners to place the initiative on the ballot. And what we're getting from the county commissioner, showed up in force today, was that they are looking for support from the majority of the electeds to say, yeah, let's put it on, let's go for it. And I think, you know, with anybody that is trying to put on new taxes, you know, it's, it's something that, you know, you have to consider, you have to consider widely, go to people. So with that, I'm here to answer any questions you might have about distribution of funds or anything, if you want to talk about the 911 center, that I can give you factual information about. But I am happy to do so. Or if you have questions, you can. But that's it in a nutshell. We, District 20, which is your fire district here, and District 15, the commissioners voted to send a letter to the Board of County Commissioners, encourage them to place this on, be on the November ballot this year. And the tax would be, the collection would start in January. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Have they selected a location for the 911?
So at this, at this point in time, there hasn't been no new location. It's still on the old jail on top of the courthouse. The ultimate goal is for us to find a new location, something that is probably more earthquake sustainable. But at this point in time, we don't have any plans because of funding to be able to seek out that. We do have a backup dispatch center and county maintenance buildings over on Forest Sound Road, but it's, it's in poor shape.
So have they put in a new radio system?
So right now, they have some ARPA funds. So ARPA funds were the funds that they got for, for COVID-19, the funding they got. So I believe it's $6 million. They're upgrading some microwave right now. They have some other funding that they have to spend on those ARPA funds and some money is, I believe they received $2 million from a former congressman, Jamie Rar Butler, that, that $2 million went to that. So I think they're at $6, $8 million. And what they're doing with that is to cover all the newer radio equipment that we desperately need. So most of the stuff they're working on right now is the microwaves that they do. So essentially, you know, if you look at, you know, how much communication cost it takes, it takes quite a bit of money to run a test to Packwood, and Packwood is a very small user of the system. So there's also been some debate on whether, in most times, what percentage of those funds should go towards enhancing that radio system? You know, you know, why should we pay money to Centralia and Winlock even with a different frequency and those type of things? But that's what, that's what they're working on now. It's pretty good.
So what is the fiber distribution, helping with any locations?
So they're going to, they're looking at the existing towers and upgrading existing towers now. I do believe they have another site. There is a site at the Toledo Airport they're trying to enhance. And I believe that they're looking at another, I think they had a console come in and looking at another tower site, but it was over towards Mineral, I believe.
So they've selected, they're buying the radio equipment, correct?
They're buying microwave. They have, that was the only thing that they're.
Just microwave at this time?
Yes, sir.
Ultimately, they're replacing.
Ultimately, the idea is replace all the radios, yes.
In, in vehicles and towers?
So there is a debate on whether who's going to fund the vehicles and the portable radios that we all own. So we own, we own the radios. So one of the questions that came up was, you know, who should, who should fund this? And there've been, so there is a model we looked at Thurston County, so TCOM, Thurston County Communications. They own everything. They own every radio, every portable. So if my portable breaks, I just go to the TCOM Radio Center and take my radio hanging in there. There has been discussion about going to that model, but then they want to do some, some budgets on that. Right now, what they're looking at is if we do go ahead and upgrade, especially for fire one frequency, get Mason County off of there, probably still going to keep our own radios and we would have to probably pay a reprogramme fee at this time. Our radios are in pretty decent shape, but they're not, but they're in decent shape.
So how many different entities drive on the 911 system?
So.
Police, fire.
Police, fire, and then there are some minor, I think, there are some minor public work, I think.
Not sure.
But it's mostly police, fire. It's the 19 fire districts and then the police departments. The Shealess, Centralia, Sheriff's Office, Naperville, Morton, Toledo, Winlock. I believe that's it for the city and for the cities that are on that. So. But fire-wise, we're Riverside Fire Department, they're on their own fire frequency. The rest of the sheriff frequency, well, there are four frequencies. They're all, they're all the same frequency except for Fire 2, which is Riverside up there. The East County, that's three and four, but they're still on the same frequency, less than a percent of each. So we share only the terror frequencies, but somebody's might have asked for a frequency plan for all this.
Do you know that's going to raise the, like, fire conflict?
Yeah, so we went, recently acquired some abandoned channels. So we found each, back in the day, all of us had a bad frequency. It was a bad of frequency. A lot of us decided that we didn't need those because we were on Fire 1. So we took some of those abandoned frequencies, they reallocated those and they made tactical channels. So there's five tactical channels. And those tactical channels, when we get on fire ground, when we get to a fire, we change our fire one, change to a tac channel. As opposed to, we use red net now, which is a statewide system. Really not supposed to be using it, but you know, we did when those were on it. But we, but you know, it's just something that we wanted designated channels. So those channels, those fire tac channels would be, one would be used primarily for training and the other would be distributed east, west side, those type of things. So that, you know, if we were going to fire a tac one and let's say Alaskan was already used on us, we would just turn to tac two and change everything. And then we use all of our aircraft operations for our tac 11. So anytime we land a helicopter, it's just the tac 11, so.
Do you have national frequency on your team?
The only, the only frequency that we have, what we consider to be national frequencies would be the red net channel. We don't have anything more. We don't have interoperability with any of the federal agencies, but we also have our set of bank of DNR channels for natural resources, for a lot of the fire. We have those channels, those guys.
This gets on the ballot and it fails again. Do you guys have a backup plan or are you going to wait another two years or four years for?
That would be based upon what the county commissioners would decide. Our, our plan was the CUC or any of, any of the emergency agencies, we would prefer to have it put back on the ballot again. Our, our plan, or our, our probably thought last time, because it was kind of a quick process and with us, we can't go out in uniform and remote. So we had, we, there was really, there was really no way of really giving this message out to the public that was, it was factual information. So this time, a little bit more, a little bit more time, so they developed this political action committee, which we made up by citizens, that had been set up to play, and they're going to start doing the public outreach. You know, when I go to those meetings, I have to wear civilian clothes and write in my own comments. You know, I can't represent, you know, the agency with official capacity because, you know, I don't want to be any complex. The backup plan would be is that we would try until it passes. If not, we would have to go back to the same thing. So again, we changed the distribution of the funding from 70% of law enforcement side to, from 70 to 30. When we did a study, we found out this law enforcement was using generally more than 70% of the time. And then we agreed between law enforcement and up to do a 75, 20 question. Well, that made law enforcement's contributions shoot through the roof. I mean, Vators went up 390, 250. So the hope is that with this two tenths of one percent and then people that are coming from outside using our, you know, our funds and, you know, paying, paying sales tax of, you know, well, we have a huge influx of tourists and those peoples buying into this and contributing those monies to help us. And then we engage the money on the taxpayer. That's our hope.
So just very encrypted on those channels?
We do not encrypt the channel. Look pretty antiquated. I mean, you would already, pretty antiquated. We're hoping that the new system will be, yeah, I, you know, we made that, I, all I know is I push this. That's the extent of my radio knowledge. You can turn it on and I can talk on it, that's about it. So I'm not, I'm not one of those guys. I don't know. But I know that the media people that we have are very good and I know they'll take the service.
You know, the funding allocation changes that, that took place this year. So we were certified, we got the bill for nearly 400% more than what we've been paying for decades. And it was a little bit of a sticker shock. So it's good to see that there's.
Should've seen Naperville's numbers.
I saw Naperville's numbers.
That was insane.
All the cities want to buy a lot. So, yeah, it's, it's good that there's a plan that perhaps alleviates some of those.
That's, that's.
The cities are going to see.
Well, hopefully I answered, I answered your question. I tried not to take up too much of your time. I have a tendency to run one, talk fast, so I've asked, answered whatever.
Yes, sir. You're going to be on some, the cities involved, some public work, they have radio, making references.
So I think Lewis County Public Works is the only one that's on the 911, as far as I, as I remember. I know we had, I think there are other cities have their own specified channels, but as far as the 911 emergency broadcast, it's only, it's fire and some public work.
Thank you. It's still on the view.
Yes, yeah, combining command. It is. And I think with, with the new system, it allows them to have more channels, explore the possibility of our radios, to have more, you know, this one here is a, this one here, I started in 2007. This is what the issue is. I still have it. So it's an older one. But it has two, two channel banks. The newer ones, we have three channel banks. And so whichever 19, 20 channels each, so there's 60 channels. We have a better capability of getting more channels, of that interoperability.
And combining, you know, the main channels now, so. They have to be narrowed down.
Yeah, we had to go back and have all these.
Well, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
We'll probably talk, we'll talk about later on in the, in the agenda, but I don't think, oh, we'll talk about it later on in the agenda.
Okay, so you want me to stick around? I'll talk. Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you for your report.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Well, if that cash flow was going to ring, would it have been a contribution in the 911?
So.
Is there a question?
Not immediately. They'll have, probably, it'll probably, it'll have to go, that, they have a budget and so they would have to, if it passed this year.
Man, it could have a problem, but.
Yeah, when they, if, if it were to pass, they would know in November. And when they go to do their budget for 2025, they can base their budget on the known new income that they will have. And so then they could, not necessarily.
Maybe our bill won't go up for a new.
Right, yeah. So we, we, yeah, in 2025, we might see the decrease in our bill.
Which will take. Yeah.
All right, that's it. Special reports. Any members of the public have any comments tonight? Okay, moving on to item number one, a public hearing for the six-year transportation improvement plan for 2025, 2030. This is an annual state requirement where the public can voice their opinion or concerns about our annual transportation improvement plan. I will open this public hearing until we've exhausted the public comment and then we will close the public hearing. Public hearing is open at 6:31 PM. Is there any public comment on the six-year transportation improvement plan?
Just wanted to see if this is going to change though, when we do all this, like the. Yeah, probably go out, you call it, when you, when we do the subdivisions, aren't they going to do some of these streets that we have on?
They've tried to take, take that into account in there already. Any, any comment from the public? Last one more time anymore. Any comment from the public on this? Okay.
You just asked three times.
I did just ask three times.
Did you really?
That was the third time.
Oh, all right. We're good.
Hearing done. This public hearing is closed at 6:32 PM. Moving on to item number two, council would consider resolution 092024 for the six-year transportation improvement plan. Unfortunately, it's not actually ready for council adoption. We're still waiting to hear back from Department of Commerce regarding the SEPA application for it. Again, just one of the requirements for this. So it'll be on agenda at a later time for adoption. But we do have the public hearing out of the way, which is good. Any other comments on the six-year transportation plan from the council? I mean, you guys have seen it already a couple of times. See it every year. Moving on to the fun stuff, council would consider. Moving on to the fun stuff, council would consider ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh-five for the zoning amendment for the PUD overlay zone. So obviously this is part of a, of two parts for the Kessel Court application. This portion changes our zoning code so that that particular parcel where the subdivision is planned can have the planned unit development update for the zoning. Should have been the, you guys all got that information a week ago in your email with the staff reports, with the zoning map. Again, the changes are only related to that, in the parcel.
It's a big parcel. The amended changes only apply to that parcel.
That's correct, and I see our city planner Christina Hayworth is on line. If Christina, you can chime in whenever you'd like.
Okay, yeah, I would be, I would be happy to go through the presentation that I shared with planning commission. I believe that is part of your packet, but if, if it would be helpful, I can run through that. That might address any questions if, or if you'd rather just ask questions, I'm here to answer anything that comes up.
I would appreciate the presentation.
Okay, great. Mayor Shai, are you able to enable me to share my screen?
Uh, I do, only the folks online will be able to see it, unfortunately. I didn't set up the projector here at City Hall.
That's okay, everyone should have received a copy of the slide deck so we can all follow along together. Okay, so what you should have in front of you is a plain white slide that says Kessel Court, sub twenty-three dash oh-two, Vader Planning Committee, May sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Please let me know when we're ready to advance.
I can see it.
All right, give the folks, the folks have to shuffle paper a couple, couple moments.
It was probably in that email you got a week ago. In fact, it was in that email that you got a week ago. It's the same information.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay. All right, so I will go ahead and advance the slide to the title, project updates and new exhibits. So there is, which you should all have in your packets. We're working with the revised staff report that is dated May thirteenth. This revision clarified that new streets are public, there are no private streets proposed. And also the update that the CIPA process has been completed, we've received no appeals. So there's no, no concern on the environmental review front. You also received the new exhibits, including this one, Exhibit C, which is the presentation that we're looking at. I will advance the slide to the project description. So this project is proposing to divide six point four one acres into eleven new single-family lots and is making use of the planned unit development process that is allowed within the Vader Municipal Code as well as using stream and wetland buffer, buffer averaging to make the best use of developable land that they can. The project includes the provision of new utilities, right-of-way improvements along Tenth Street and stormwater management, and also includes a new pocket park and quite a bit of critical areas and open space preservation. Advance to the next slide, you should see it's titled site characteristics and there's a map of the property. So as I mentioned, it's six point four one acres, it's currently zoned R1. This is called the base zone when we're talking about the planned unit development overlay. As you can tell from the aerial photo, it's substantially covered in existing mature vegetation. It's characterized with rolling topography on the north, north, northwest side and has a steeper drop-off toward a stream and wetland complex towards the southeast. There are critical areas present on site that include steep slopes, one fish-bearing stream, two non-fish-bearing tributary streams and one wetland. Next slide is project details and this one, this is an animated flip-through slide. I'm not sure how easily this is, this will be followed by those of you turning pages. So let me know if I'm moving too quickly. So highlighted in yellow are the eleven new single-family lots. And you can see the configuration up on the north side of the property. The new public streets are the Kessel Court, North-South Street between kind of the, the main cluster of lots and then Sky Court is a little stubout headed towards the east. There are frontage improvements proposed on Tenth Street, which runs along the north end of the property. And there are two new stormwater tracts, one between lots ten and eleven and one south of Lot Five and the walking trail. The pocket park is tucked in between lots eight and seven in the center of the project area. And then the remainder of the site is primarily preserved open space area.
So that pocket park, that pocket park, there's been people talking about that it's not a public park. It's just for their community, is that true?
That is correct. It is, it is a private recreational facility and it would be up to the homeowners association to decide whether they wanted to allow public use of that facility. They are the ones paying to furnish and maintain that space, so it's not a city obligation. But it is, yes, a private open space for this development.
Yeah, it looks like it's, it's only a space that's about fifteen feet wide by maybe forty feet long. It's not very big.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty.
I'm sure they won't be able to do too much with it.
It's, I think it's described as like a, maybe a top lot, although I think the, the final design isn't, hasn't been turned up yet. It does connect to what's shown in white is a little walking path that connects to the sidewalk along Sky Court. So there, there is a little bit of additional recreational space. But again, that's, it's, it's private space that is maintained by the owners association here. It is, it is small. Most of the community open space requirements is fulfilled by the very substantial preservation of the stream and wetland buffer area.
So is that, is that part getting them anything from us? Does that make sense? Like they're putting the park in so that they can.
Have smaller lots is what I took.
Yes, so the, the provision of community open space and recreational facilities is, is a requirement of the PUD process. So the PUD process is already allowed in the code, but to be able to access it, they do have to provide twenty percent of their site area, minimum of twenty percent of their site area as some kind of community recreational facility and open space. So the combination of the pocket park, the walking trail and the critical areas preservation is their proposal to meet that requirement.
It's not just the little fifteen-foot pocket park, it's all the other stuff that is what's getting them their twenty percent.
Then they have to maintain, is that the walk that you were talking about?
That's the, that would be getting the nature shown, yeah.
That would go over to Park, Park. And they have to maintain that section of it?
They have to maintain all of this space. So we're still working through final revisions to their CCNRs and bylaws, but our attorney has provided comments that require these to be maintained in perpetuity as well as the stormwater facilities and to a standard commensurate with what they, what they look like when they're installed. So they can't fall into substantial disrepair or become any kind of safety hazard or nuisance. There's pretty limited ability to do maintenance work in the open space tract, the lighter green that's shown on my screen for reference, because it is going to be set aside as a critical areas, reserve area essentially. The, the kind of work that could be permitted in there would be something like removal of invasive species or hazard trees that could pose a safety risk. But by and large, there wouldn't be any, any significant work that would happen in the critical areas, open space tract. So they would only really be looking at regular maintenance of that pocket park and the trail.
But that, so that, that trail really is just for them to get into park. I mean, if it's private.
It's not going to be gated or anything, it's just, they can ask us, they can ask people that are routinely using it to not use it because it's their trail or whatever.
But if it's attached to ours, is it, is it going to go to that? And I, I see a lot of.
It would be issues with this. It'd be difficult for them to access just the city residents.
Yeah, and then if we have a trail going from park to that and then all of a sudden a gate there, are they going to turn and walk up Alpine Ford or?
They're going to go through your yard.
Yeah, are they coming through my place? I mean.
Anyway.
But, okay.
Sprinklers.
What's that?
You can have automatic sprinklers out there.
Yeah, motion sensor sprinklers.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just, it just seems like that walking trail to me seems like a good idea, but if it's going to a private park and there's no exit to it. That's a. Not a great thing.
I agree.
The, the applicant is here if you have, if you have questions about what, what the intentions might be. But fundamentally, it would be up to the owners association to enforce any, any requirements for, you know, resident use, resident and guest use only. It would be, it would be like a civil trespass situation that they would, that they would use, you know, after posting, after posting rules and regulations on the pocket park. It's difficult to imagine, for me anyway, that residents would be upset by people using the, the trail, even if they weren't members of the community, given, given how little wear and tear that represents. But it is, it's certainly possible.
Well, what I'm looking at, excuse me, Mike, for one second. What I'm looking at is like their trail ends at the edge of their property. Doesn't really tie into city property. They're just trying to utilize, like and mark out a certain amount of area on their map so that they can be in compliance with what they're asking for, offering up this, the amount of space. Am I wrong, Christina?
So they're, they're not really required, there's no, there's no specific guidance on what the community recreational space and open space or community recreational facilities and open space need to look like or how much proportionally each, you know, each thing needs to represent in their project. So, you know, I guess what I'm saying is they didn't have to, they didn't have to put the trail in, in this way. I think they're, they're providing the opportunity for a future connection, should that make sense. And in the meantime, it remains a trail for their residents.
Okay, thank you for, thank you for the clarification.
Two, two comments, Kathy, did a comment?
My problem with this earlier was that they're calling it a community recreation area and if you advertise these homes for sale, you get this, this and this, a walking trail. And it's really private, I mean, that doesn't make sense to me. If it's not a community, for the community, then you call it, I don't know, come with this private park or whatever. But it, it sounds misleading to me to call it a community recreation area when the whole community is not invited.
Well, it, it's a joint community, it's, it's a housing development.
I think there are also the, the developer, Sadie, you're online as well, did you have a comment?
Yeah, hi, can you, can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, hi, so I'm Sadie Naglitz with HOA, we are the applicant's planner and engineer. Essentially, just wanted to clarify what the park and the trailer for. So they are going to be owned by the HOA. The park, it is pretty small, it's going to have maybe a couple benches and like some nature play elements for like little kids, but it's not going to be a giant park by any means. We do know that the city wants to eventually have a bigger trail that connects through here that will access some of the city-owned property to the west. So in the future, when that trail is constructed, it would be up to the city and the HOA to work out potentially an agreement to use part of the trail or all of the trail on our property to, you know, connect that and make it a loop for everybody to use. But that is, you know, that's in the future. For, for now, for this application, the trail and the park are being used to fulfill the code requirements for the public open space, or sorry, not the public open space, the community open space for the specific development that we are providing in order to do the planned unit development. I hope that clears things up a little bit.
Thank you, Sadie.
I do also want to make it clear that there, there are no requirements in the PUD regulations that, that would mandate these facilities be public facilities. It's, it's silent on that, so it's up to the developer to propose either privately owned or publicly owned facilities. And in this case, they are, they are privately owned.
Is the plan to have it gated?
At this point, because there is no trail to the west, there would be no point in putting that gate there, so.
Oh, oh, not in reference to the trail, but the, the Kessel Court Road and I guess lots eleven, ten and eleven would be street parking. Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, this is not a gated community at all, the, it's all public roads. It's just those two very small spots that would be HOA maintained. A little park with the logs for the kids to crawl on and, and the, and initially the walking path.
I, I made several assumptions when I heard HOA.
Yeah, so they, they're proposing that both Kessel Court and Tri Court are public roads, so they wouldn't be allowed to gate it now or at any point in the future since they would be owned by the city of Vader.
I only had one last question and that was, are these going to be for sale properties or for rent properties?
Uh, the, the properties would be individually owned, but the city has no control over whether those are owner occupied or rental occupied.
The HOA does though, and do you know if the HOA is planning on them being rental properties or privately owned properties?
Uh, I don't recall seeing any kind of rental cap in the CCNRs, but Sadie, maybe you recall?
Uh, yeah, so at, at this point, our understanding is that the owner of the property intends to sell these off to be individually owned. I don't believe we have anything in the HOA documents that prohibits, you know, so many units from being rentals if an individual owner chooses to do so, but that is, that is up to the future owners in the HOA.
So what is the HOA for, just the park?
For the, the park and the trails and the stormwater facilities.
Yes, the idea is that the city won't have to take care of these stormwater ponds. You know, they'll, they'll, you know, these will be larger spaces that willing to get occasionally cleaned out and weeded and whatnot. And so the HOA would be responsible for that instead of the city. So they'll have to have.
And then of course, there are, there are the private, private requirements for all of the individual lot owners for aesthetics, minimum standards for maintenance, that kind of thing. minimum standards for maintenance, that kind of thing.
Do you know what the HOA fees are going to be in that property area?
I do not.
No, I was just curious.
They are, they're typically established by the HOA board, I think, once that was, was created. Other questions on this project detail slide, or should I go ahead and move on?
I, I have some questions.
Okay.
Hello?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, does Lewis County have stormwater maintenance agreement templates? Or is this some new document that Lewis County needs to create?
This, the stormwater maintenance is governed by the CCNRs. And the city attorney has made some recommendations for that. So it's not using, I guess it, it's its own separate document that is already drafted and being negotiated.
And what type of stormwater facility is going to be built?
I, I'm sorry. I, I think I missed the first part of your follow-up question.
What type of stormwater facility is being built?
Oh, thank you. They're stormwater ponds. For temporary, temporary detention and so discharge.
Is, is there in the legal agreement, a condition that if the HOA were to dissolve, that there would still be maintenance of the stormwater facilities?
There are agreements in the CCNRs that have been recommended by the city attorney that would require or would, would empower the city to perform maintenance and then bill back to the HOA. If the HOA dissolves, I'll need to check in with the city attorney on that. But if the HOA dissolves, then there wouldn't be a responsible party to bill back that maintenance to.
Can there be a bond placed onto this, the stormwater facility? So that the city can maintain it if they fail to and get paid out of that?
That is, that's a good question. That's not, I've never come across that particular request. And I will also have to check in with the city attorney on that.
I'll have more questions later.
Craig, could you please state your last name for the record, please?
Omen.
Thank you. Yeah, the stormwater ponds are, the city's part of our development regulations. We subscribe to the standards, but I believe it's the Puget Sound Stormwater Standard. Is that correct, Christina? And I know that's more of a Steve question, but.
That is a Steve question. I can look it up really quick.
But yeah, the city, the city subscribes to one of the two major state stormwater design guideline books. And so that's a.
It's the Stormwater Management Manual for Western Washington.
Western Washington. So these would be the standards for, the state standards.
Yeah, th- those are standards for construction, but standards for maintenance often fall by the wayside. And that's why bonds are required on these private developments.
Right. Thanks for bringing that up.
So this is Valerie with Hayward Yuskowski. If I could insert and answer some of those questions for you on the stormwater maintenance. Department of Ecology does have regulations in addition to how those facilities are constructed. They provide guidance on how those facilities are to be maintained as well. So the homeowners association would need to maintain to that minimum standard set forth by Ecology. And those are part of the operating documents of the HOA. In the event that the HOA decided that they were going to disband, I do believe the city would have the ability to come back to the individual homeowners and apply liens to their title for the maintenance. So you do have some fail-safe measures in there to ensure that the maintenance is done without it being at the expense of the city.
Thank you very much for that.
That's, that's great information. Thank you. Any other questions before I continue? All right, hearing none. Uh, I am going to go through the staff analysis now. So I've just changed the slide to staff analysis preliminary subdivisions. Uh, as documented in the staff report, the project will meet applicable development standards if the PUD is approved. The design does support comprehensive plan policies related to land use and housing. Uh, and as designed, the project provides adequate public facilities for water, sewer, stormwater, transportation, and community recreational facilities, uh, as verified by the city engineer and myself during project review. And the project makes provisions for public health, safety, and general welfare, and will serve the public interest. Regarding the planned unit development, I do want to be clear that the, the PUD is an overlay zone that applies on top, on top of and in addition to the underlying R1 residential zone. That base zone does remain in effect, but is modified by the planned unit development regulations. In this case, that means that PUDs are allowed a reduced lot size. So they can have a lot size of 6,000 square feet instead of 7,500 square feet, uh, as well as a reduced lot width of 60 feet instead of the base requirement, 75 feet. In exchange for that, PUDs have to provide that 20% development area as open space and community recreational facilities, which they have far exceeded in this case. So all of the lots as proposed, I've now, I've flipped to the next planned unit development slide. Um, all of the lots as proposed do meet this modified PUD lot size and width standard. The project provides a total of 49.6% of its development area as open space and community recreational facilities. About 2.98 acres is preserved open space and about 0.2 acres is that pocket park and trail space. Uh, they have provided their CCNRs and bylaws, and those documents will ensure maintenance of all of the privately owned space and stormwater facilities. We have provided some review comments. Uh, there is ongoing negotiation and revisions are required for the recommended conditions of approval that you've got in front of you. All right, I've now flipped to the next slide titled Staff Analysis: Critical Areas Buffer Averaging. So this is a, an important part of their project as well to help get the configuration of the developable area as shown. They're proposing to remove some areas that are highlighted in purple here. For streams, that's 1,444 square feet. And for wetlands, that's 1,907 square feet of buffer area. And then add back in that exact same amount here on the southern end of the development area for a total of no net loss of buffer area. Some key points here that are related to the criteria for approving a buffer averaging plan are that no net loss of total buffer area. Um, and specifically, no loss of buffer area adjacent to the critical area. So adjacent to neither the stream nor the wetland. It's on the very outside edges of the buffer areas. We have no anticipated impacts to habitat quality or functionality as a result of this buffering plan. And buffer averaging is consistent with the Vader Municipal Code requirements that implement best available science. So with that, I've now flipped to the recommendation slide. Staff recommends approval of both the Planned Unit Development Zoning Map Amendment and the Preliminary Subdivision Requests, subject to 17 conditions of approval that are enumerated in the staff report. Those conditions consist of some general conditions that describe next steps and assign clear responsibilities for accomplishing those. Uh, some requirements related to construction of transportation, utility, and park improvements, and requirements to coordinate with the city and other agencies for certain of those improvements, as well as installing critical areas protections consistent with the Vader Municipal Code. Are there any other questions at this point?
Yeah. Um, so is the, the developer, are they planning on building the houses themselves? Or are they gonna parcel off the lots to be developed on? I, I, I'm, I'm more concerned about the intention. I mean, I'm a neighbor as well, so I'd like to know who my new neighbors are, are gonna be.
Sadie, that's a better question for you and your team, if you wouldn't mind responding.
Hi, this is Valerie again. Uh, so to answer that question is, we do plan on the developer to build out the streets and create the lots at this time. I don't know whether he's planning on building the homes himself and then selling the homes, or if he'll sell out the individual lots. Either way, typically, um, with the development in HOA, we'll have certain standards to ensure that we maintain quality for the neighborhood, that we don't, like, we won't allow mobile home placements, for example, but it'll all be like stick-built nicer homes. Rather than piecemealing together neighborhood, that we want a cohesive look that will stand the test of time.
That was the reassurance I was asking for. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there other questions? Okay, then the last thing that I wanted to point out is that the planning committee did recommend approval consistent with the staff recommendation and subject to staff's recommended conditions of approval. Uh, you should have a, a transmittal letter from the planning committee that documents that. And that, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christina.
That was very informative.
Can I see the agenda again, Mayor?
Should be up for you now, Mike.
We're looking at number three, correct?
That's correct.
I like the motion that we approve ordinance 202405 zoning amendment for PUD overlay zone.
The motion by Mr. Ferguson to approve ordinance 2405. Do we have a second?
One second.
Second, Mr. Daley, discussion.
Just to stay on the right side of the law, does, uh, does Randy need to recuse himself? Because Victoria had to recuse thing. Is that a thing or is just really convenient for Victoria?
Right, she was asked.
No, she was asked not to be there. I just don't want it to, I don't know if this really is or not, but I just wanna.
Mr. Hall, would you recuse yourself from this vote, please? Okay, but Kathy, you did vote on this at the planning committee, correct? All right, would you please recuse yourself? Thank you. Further discussion?
No.
All right. All those in favor of approving ordinance 202405 for the zoning amendment for PUD overlay zone, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to Council to Consider Resolution 10 dash 24, approving the preliminary subdivision for Castle Court. Uh, this is kind of part two of this. I think, Christina, did your presentation adequately go over this as well?
My, my presentation did address the, the project holistically. And perhaps I should have explained that you do have these two actions. So approving, approving the zoning amendment essentially gives them the, the right to use those PUD regulations. And then this resolution is the actual approval for the project. So at this, at this point, you have given them permission to use those modified PUD requirements. And this will be, this resolution will be your, your decision on the project as presented.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 10 dash 2024, approving the subdivision for Castle Court.
We have a motion by Mr. Daley to approve Resolution 10 dash 2024. Do we have a second?
My second.
Break out Mr. Ferguson. Any discussion on the resolution? All right. Mr. Hall, would you also, well, the resolution is, please recuse yourself. Thank you. Any other discussion from the council on the resolution? All those in favor of Resolution 10 dash 2024, approving the preliminary subdivision for Castle Court, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And thank you to the, all the folks online that were interested in this project. This is, uh, this is going to be a, a good thing for the, for the city. We're excited about it. Moving on to item number five, Council to Consider Ordinance 202406, amending the Vader Municipal Code, Chapter 1301, Vehicles and Traffic Adopting, State RCW, Chapters 4655 for towing and impoundment, establishing new Vader Municipal Code, Chapter 13 dot 16, vehicle impoundment, and Redemption and BMC 1320 abandoned vehicles. So, uh, we talked about this a couple times. City doesn't have any codes for parking. Would think that that's a pretty natural thing to have, but we don't. And so, um, this adopts some state RCWs, so we're in line with the state. We don't need to reinvent the wheel on everything. Also, the attorneys cross-referenced with Lewis County codes for parking as well. Mr. Rubin had, had some input so that the Sheriff's Department would be, our rules would be in line with what the Sheriff's Department already enforces. So again, we're not being too unique.
They would serve the tickets.
Exactly. Yeah, they would be able to serve a fine. And the city, this would give the, the city to the ability to move a vehicle if it was necessary. So obviously you've seen, you've seen the code or the, the adjustments. Is there any?
This just goes for the streets, correct? Not, not, not your, not the yard.
No, this is, this is right-of-way, this is right-of-way only.
Right away.
Right. This is right-of-way only. The city already has code enforcement regulations. So if you've got, you know, a vehicle that's causing a nuisance on property, you know, we could, we could already enforce that, you know, if it was leaking or something like that. So. But this is just unrelated. Darren, I know you, you've gone through this. Did you have any comments on this?
It seemed like a lot for Vader, like we're trying to be Seattle with our parking. I mean, if somebody has their car parked in the right-of-way, which most people park in right-of-way, and they get a ticket because they, they're poor and they can't get their new, you know, plates or whatever, then they get their car towed in 24 hours. Then they can't get their car back because they gotta pay the towing fee. I just kind of feel that's a lot to put on the people of Vader.
Well, I mean, like all of our codes.
It's mainly complaint driven, right?
Generally, it's, it's the nuisance side of it.
Park in front of your house.
Right. So it's the, it's the nuisance side of it, right? Is it causing a nuisance or not causing a nuisance? Right? I mean, heck, my, my personal driveway is half in the right-of-way because the road is 80 feet wide in front of my house. And so I could actually be. And so I could actually be in my driveway and be technically in the right-of-way. So, but I don't think people would say I'm causing a nuisance.
I think most Vader can say that about me.
Darren, does have a comment on this?
Yeah, I do now. I would highly recommend council approve this. It'll make enforcement a lot easier. I do the code enforcement. It's something the city needs. It has nothing to do with Seattle. It's just something the city of Vader needs.
It's a lot going on.
Because right now, our hands are tied trying to do anything. So you're just gonna have people dumping cars off in the right-of-way that are junk, and they're just gonna sit there.
What if we do it up here in the gray house with 10 cars, like a used car lot?
I'm working on it.
She's pointing at me, she's pointing at you, Mike.
On the corner of Main and Seven.
The railroad track. Oh, you mean that way. You're pointing in the wrong direction.
Jason's playing.
The top of the hill, the gray house, it's kinda like...
Well, if this ordinance passes, that'll help us alleviate the problem.
Sheila, I know, over the years I've been sitting here and sitting here, I've heard that from council members before. They get a piece of legislation, and it's, you know, six pages thick, and they're like, this is a lot for Vader. It is a lot, but it needs to be very specific and very thorough. If you're gonna move someone's vehicle, we have to be protected, and you have to have it, you need the legalese to protect us if you're gonna move someone's personal property. So you'd think you'd be able to have a one-pager that says, you know, don't park here, don't park here, but it doesn't work that way. It does get a little thicker. So, you're not the first person on the council to say, I wish this was not quite as wordy. But that's the way it goes. So, yeah, and I echo what Darren was saying. You know, one of the things we were trying to do downtown on A Street, you know, there was vehicles parking with the white line right down the middle of the vehicle, and we couldn't do anything about it. But that's not right. We should be able to do something about it. If we have city parking stalls, we should be able to tell people, force people to park in the stall like any normal human being does if we go to the store.
Unless you're on Facebook and IG.
Unless you're Winlock and IG, I mean, there's no rules, no rules at IG and Winlock.
I'll make a motion that we pass the ordinance 2024-06 for the towing and impounding vehicles.
You have a motion from Mr. Daley to approve ordinance 2024-06. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Parsons, for the discussion.
I understand where you're at, Sheila. It's like, you don't wanna be the hand of the law and, like, abuse people, but there is a level of accountability, and, I don't know, sometimes we have to be told, I guess.
All right, if there's another discussion? All those in favor of ordinance 2024-06, amending the Vader Municipal Code for vehicle and traffic? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number six, council to discuss county sales tax increase proposal, the two tenths of 1% for the 911 dispatch support. So this isn't necessarily council action, but it is for further discussion. So in front of you, there was the fairly simple sheet that was sent to us, and it doesn't have to come from the city. It's actually labeled individual council members. So for those of you that aren't interested in signing a collective agreement, you don't need to sign it if you don't feel up for it. But those that are, you know, we can sign it. Looks like Mr. Parsons is interested in signing it, and so we could all sign the same one if we're interested. And so this would change, if it passed, this would change the county sales tax from zero, well, from 7.8% to 7.82%. So there is a cost to every purchase that we'd be making. Although if it's...
I think it should all be sales tax.
Well, you're pro-sales tax. I like sales tax too, myself. It's a way, if you don't like being taxed, then you don't buy stuff, right? It's true, though. But anyway, 911 services, having good 911 services again. 911, law enforcement, excuse me, the fire department. These are fairly inexpensive life insurance. This is the way I look at it, right? If I call the fire department, or I want them to show up.
So, I can't be the only one that thinks about this, but, you know, they reassessed property values last year, and so everybody's property value went up. So there's an increased amount of revenue drawn off of that. And then the cost of goods has gone up. I mean, I could go on and on at each one, but, so there's more money being spent. So that means there's more tax revenue. But I just want, I struggle with, why is, why are schools, why are municipalities, like, the fire, why is the fire department asking us for money? Like, where's all the money that's already been doled out? I...
All of their bills are going up.
So...
All of their bills are going up too, Mike.
So that's a big question with a big answer.
A bigger answer, yeah.
So, first, just because the appraised value of your house goes up doesn't mean the amount of money that all the districts, counties, cities collect is more. When we go to set our, and not just us, the fire district, anybody, when we go to set our levies, we set a dollar amount. And that dollar amount is fixed until we pass another levy. So if the city of Vader, for instance, passes a levy for $80,000, which is about what we do for property taxes every year, that $80,000 is spread around the citizens within, the properties within our city limits. If the city of Vader, if the city council of Vader never says, "I want to raise property taxes at the end of the year," like we have been doing, we get $80,000 from now until the end of time, until we raise, we change our levy amount. Your house could go up to $1 million. Well... If everyone's homes went up the same percentage in relation to each other, you wouldn't see a change in sales tax. If your house in particular goes up, your percentage of that $80,000 goes up. Does that make sense? Let's say your house is worth, let's say there's, let's say there's 10 houses in town. Each house is worth $100,000. We spread the levy out among those houses. If your house is worth more than all the other houses, your percentage of the sales tax is more, right? So that's the only way your tax changes, is if either your house becomes more valuable than everyone else in relation, or the individual districts pass higher levies. So for instance, this year, the fire district, we passed a new levy. That is a new tax on top of everything else you're already paying.
Right, right.
All the other taxes will stay the same. Like, for instance, you can look at city of Vader, and your city of Vader portion on your tax bill will not have changed, or very, very, very slightly, only because the relationship between your house and the other houses has changed. So, going deeper down into it, why are all the municipalities having problems with costs? So, we can, all the, we can only raise property taxes by 1% a year, right? 1% of what we're already charging per year. And that's us, that's the schools, that's everybody. I think we can all agree that the world has gotten more expensive than 1% a year.
Like 25%?
And so, you know, we continue to give our employees pay raises, so that we have good employees, so do the schools, the fire districts. The cost for fuel, the cost for building maintenance, the cost for, everything goes up more than 1% a year. And so everyone struggles to make ends meet with the revenue that they have. And so 911 Center, very similar. Their funding comes out of property taxes that are generated, that come from the cities and the law enforcements and the fire districts and whatever. And again...
Right, and the new houses that are being built, and then the increased value of houses, there's, I mean, if a city's worth, like, at the last assessment, it's worth 23 million, and then, you know, four years later, they do another property assessment, and it's worth 32 million, there's more revenue made. It's, I don't see how it would be like...
So like Vader, for instance, is worth $78 million. Is what, if you added up all the properties in the city limits, we're at 78 million. You know, if we pass a levy for $80,000, even if the city was worth $100 million the following year, the amount of money the city would get does not change because our levy is only for $80,000. The $80,000 is spread out proportionately to every member in the city limits.
Right.
That's how it works for everybody. Like I said, if they could, the property values, the city could suddenly be worth a billion dollars. You know, your house, your house being, you know, 100 million, Mike's house being 100 million, whatever, and we would still take the $80,000 and spread it out equally among you, and your property tax for the city wouldn't change.
The cap for your particular town, but your contribution back to the county level is still the same. Right? I mean, or whatever it would be, right?
Right.
I understand all that, I understand that. Thank you.
The county raises taxes, and the city raises taxes, and the fire district raises taxes, and the school raises taxes. You know, if they, when I say raise taxes, I mean pass a levy with a higher dollar amount, then absolutely everyone's gonna see a higher amount. But everyone can only do 1% of what they charge, so they can only see a maximum of a 1% gain, which is less than...
Unless they use their bank.
Unless, for instance, if the city of Vader or the city of Centralia that has a lot of bank capacity. Centralia has a lot of bank capacity because they have an immense amount of sales tax revenue. And so, like you were saying, when things get more expensive, the amount of sales tax collected goes up, and the city automatically gets a pay raise based on more sales tax. That's, and so Centralia doesn't necessarily raise their property taxes because of that. Vader, on the other hand, on the other side, you know, when half of all of our sales tax is generated from Little Crane, you can see that, you know, we have an issue that other cities don't have. But we'll talk more about that in the budget system. But anyway, it's why, it's why, like, 911, you know, they only have, you know, they need millions of dollars to upgrade their infrastructure that they don't have. They need to pay their employees more money that they don't have, and they can't increase property tax. The property tax revenue is not keeping up with the cost of the world. So which is why you're seeing a new request of a slight sales tax increase. So I think we're gonna see more of these kinds of things as we go into the future, as cities in different districts and municipalities try to get more creative to, you know, balance the budgets.
Yeah. Yeah, I think a sales tax is better than, you know, like, ownership tax, you know? Charging me property tax or whatever, you know?
I've got a friend in Hillsborough or Beaverton, down there in the Portland metro area, and they've got a moderate-sized home on a moderate-sized lot in the city limits, and they're paying $8,000 a year in property tax. But they don't have sales tax.
No sales tax.
Hmm, yeah.
Frickin' counties is a... So, anyway. Again, there wasn't a council action on this. This was kind of an individual decision on whether you wanted to support this or not, and make sure that, for those of you that did sign it, that we get it sent off to the county to show your support. If anyone ever wants to talk about taxes, taxes, or revenue and the way things work, I'd love to sit with you and talk your...
Would you mind putting mine in my mailbox, Joe?
Sure.
Thank you.
It made complete sense to me, too. I was like, oh, he's good at this.
I tried to spend, I've spent a lot of years trying to figure out why our revenue doesn't go up when the assessor keeps raising our property value. I've finally figured it out. All right, moving on to item number seven, council to consider the special event insurance for 4th of July celebration. All right, so two parts to the insurance, so number seven and number eight. So, going on forward to number eight real quick, we found a better deal on insurance. Not only is it a better deal, it's got the multimillion-dollar coverage we wanted. But that will only be for the fireworks-related portion of the show. The special event insurance that's talking about in number seven is our normal insurance we get for things like May Day. What else do we do where we get special event insurance for? There's something else that we do. The Christmas bazaar, things like this. So if someone falls off a curb, someone chokes on a Lions Club hot dog, you know, whatever it is, you know, we're covered for the folks that are hanging out and the general liability. So that's what this insurance policy would be for. And then the number eight insurance policy is for the show itself. But we'll start with the council action on the special event insurance. So we just need an approval for that.
I'll make a motion... A motion that we approve the special event insurance for the 4th of July celebration, $398.66.
A motion from Mr. Ferguson to approve the special event insurance. Jason?
I'll second it.
Daley had a second? Any other discussion on this or explanation? All those in favor of approving the special event insurance costs, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Moving on to number eight, the fireworks display insurance. So you can see in the back of that, we just got the policy in the email just this afternoon, and you can see, if you remember last time, we were the...
3,800? Yeah.
On the other page, it said 2100.
I'm looking at 2,400.
Yeah, 2,400, and then on the page that I'm looking at over here, it says 3,500 before taxes and fees.
The one in my emails for 2,400, it says 38. It's different. So which one do you have?
I have 38, 35, and 38. You know, mine says 24.
You're sitting... Well, the agenda says...
Public screen says 2,400.
Yeah, the agenda says 24. Does anyone have?
Everything else that I have is the 30, or I'm gonna access fees.
Is 24, 1 million or 2 million?
It was gonna be 2,000, the policy amount, and I have it somewhere here, it was 2,000 plus taxes and fees. And the fee was 175, and then taxes on that. So the whole amount was actually less than 2,400. Let's see if I can pull up and see where this came from. I had... So, right.
Oh, because this is a $2 million policy instead of a $1 million policy.
I'm gonna try to put my email real quick here without crashing the lap. See where this one came from. I wonder if they had two options. That's why there were two attachments.
When at the last meeting, wasn't it like 250,000 or something, Joe?
Yeah, it was like a $100,000 policy. Yeah, it wasn't even gonna cover...
And it was like $3,000 or something. That was silly.
Yeah, you got, yeah, same one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's got.
Well, it's probably the two million.
Where'd this one come from that Lisa printed out? Sorry for the confusion, folks. Yeah, all the, all the, all the quote papers I have. Say two thousand plus taxes and fees. Just make sure that limits are all the same. Deductible. Weird.
Well, we like the twenty four hundred dollar.
I like the twenty four hundred dollar one as well. Like I said, it's actually less than that. It's two thousand plus taxes and fees. The fee was one seventy five and the taxes were forty five.
And the coverages are one, one million for each accident and two million aggregate?
Correct, yeah. The, the coverages are exactly as displayed here. I'll show you. I'll show you for proof.
How much had we originally budgeted for that?
There you go, Mike. Let's see if you can see that one.
I don't think we budgeted for this at all.
We didn't budget for this at all. That was, that was the, the issue was that in the previous years, the, our, the shooter that basically volunteered to do it, had his own insurance because of his employer, which was really lucky for the city that that, that we had that. Unfortunately, this year we don't have that luxury. And so
They were in higher.
And we're interested in our own. So of course, if we want our own policy, we have to get it.
How much did we budget for the show itself?
Six thousand, five hundred dollars.
And how much did we pay?
We, we spent six thousand, five hundred on the fireworks. So I talked about this a couple of weeks ago. When we do the budget amendment, you know, we'll be able to we'll be able to adjust the budget accordingly to cover this with a variety of saving the city has seen this year. It won't be a problem.
So are we sure that it's the twenty four hundred and not the thirty five hundred?
I, I can't say for sure.
Oh, did we get donations?
We have gotten donations. That's correct. Yeah, thanks. Thanks for that. Yeah. We had a $500 fireworks show donation today.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, folks love this thing, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. So I can't say, I don't know where this thirty five hundred dollar quote came from. Cause I'm looking at the attachment right in my email right now and it's for the lower price.
Okay.
Total premium, twenty two hundred and twenty dollars and sixty eight cents.
Yeah, and there'll be a sixty seven dollar credit card processing fee on top of that. Unless we send them a check. So
I'll make a motion that we approve the fireworks display insurance contingent that it's the original number. Or are we going to do it no matter what?
Well.
At this point, we tend to have to. Cause we won't have another meeting for that, right?
We will not have another meeting for that. There were, there were some other policies that we got that were a little bit more expensive than this other one, about $500 more expensive. And so there is another one option out there. But it would probably be for probably closer to three thousand, all said and done.
Also make a motion that we approve the virus display insurance for two thousand twenty four.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve the insurance up to twenty four hundred dollars. Do you have a second?
I will second that.
Mr. Ferguson. We'll try to figure out where this.
I didn't say up to twenty four hundred. I said for two thousand twenty four.
Oh, for the, for the year of two thousand. So what? Okay. So you, you're making a motion to approve what's written on the agenda for 2024.
Maybe we should move, make the motion up to.
Well, we want to make sure that we
Okay. Oh, I see what you're doing. Okay. So you're approving.
That's the whole point. It's, they don't have the exact dollar amount to the penny. So, cause of the processing fees, so.
Okay.
We, we gotta give Joe a budget.
Gotcha. Thank you. I just had to get up to speed. Thanks, everybody for fixing me. We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve fireworks insurance costs. Do we have a second?
I will second.
Okay, Mr. Ferguson. All right, other discussion. We'll try to get the less expensive of the two. Said I have it right in my email. Any other discussion? Or am I just rambling on?
I just received another $500 donation towards the fireworks.
Oh, thank you to whoever, whoever donated. Yeah, it makes a big difference. And it just goes to, to show us all, you know, how people, how much people value this. This in the city. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. And again, sorry for the confusion. I forgot where this one came from. Dr. Brian.
Do you make donations here at City Hall?
You can make donations here.
I'll take a donation.
If you go, if you go on the city website, where you would normally pay your utility bill for sewer. In the, when you go to pay, when you go to make a payment there, just instead of your account number, you can type in fourth of July donation or Parks donation. That's how we get donations from folks. Okay, and moving on to elected official comments. So I think you said you had a comment tonight.
I was wondering what you guys think about, we're the only town pretty much in Washington that doesn't pay our mayor. What do you guys think about paying our mayor? He does a lot of stuff. I mean, it wouldn't be a lot of money, but maybe help him out with his gas or something. It's like.
So I, I asked Joe that. I, I, I had the conversation with somebody about that and, and he wouldn't take a payment if he gave it to him. He'd turn around and give it back.
He wouldn't? For your gas?
This is, I, I really appreciate the sentiment. This is what I think about that. One, the folks that are sitting here doing this job, aren't doing it for any type of compensation, right? And so I think you, one, you get a different kind of person that's willing to do it. Obviously, if you're paying someone, I know, I know Toledo is a hundred dollars a month or something like that. It's not, it's not much. But still, it's a different kind of incentives, incentive to do the job, right? If you're not getting paid versus a hundred percent volunteer. So, you know, obviously with elected officials that get paid, you know, a living wage. Again, their motivation for staying in office kind of changes when they're worried that they're going to lose their job every four years. Not that a hundred dollars would probably change someone's mind either way, but also I can say you get what you pay for if you pay nothing.
Well, I can't believe we get a lot.
But that is, that is, that is my thought on it.
You don't want it.
But I, I don't, I don't, I don't need it. I think I'd feel bad. I think I'd feel bad taking a hundred dollars a month from the city or whatever it would be. But.
This is a real life video game he's doing.
It's like SimCity.
This is SimCity.
Anyway, so, but that's, but that's, that's my thought. But I'm not the council. Talk about that more, think about it. Bring it during budget season. It'll probably be the best time to bring that up.
The only other thing that I've got is Harwell Farm will be having the movie in the meadow on July nineteenth. Everybody's invited. Just, I'm working on getting postcards mailed out, but I hope, I already ordered the postcards and hopefully they will fit the whole.
Is it in your orchard?
Uh, in the meadow, yeah, out, out in the back area.
You're talking about movies in the park, but.
Movies in the park, but Harwell Farm, so. Yeah, the Lions Club is going to have popcorn that they're just giving away. And they would gladly take donations for the Lions Club.
Do you have a parking garage for everybody or is it a walk in only kind of?
It's cut, well, there's, I do have my shopyard.
Can't, we can't park on the right of ways now, so.
Actually, F Street is private, so you can park all over that. No, there is, I'll have my shopyard pretty well cleared.
That's cool.
Moved around and there's other places to park on F, off of F Street on my property, all the way down.
Please don't park on 10th.
Yeah, there's no room to park on 10th. Actually, in the front of my house, there is a grass area there, but I try to keep that nice. So I prefer people not parking there. But anyway, everybody's invited. You can park at the school. It's only a quarter mile to walk to the place. And we're going to be showing Secondhand Lions. Yeah, so.
You know, you know that movie?
Yeah.
No, no one does know that movie.
No, I don't.
You don't know that movie either? I felt really bad. Mike looked at me like, what do you mean you don't know that movie? Show me the trailer. It's got like everyone, every actor and actress you ever seen in it, so.
So anyway, that's what's going on July nineteenth.
Great. What time? Ten, nine thirty, nine forty five?
Actually, the, the way the Google says, it should be about nine o'clock that we'll be able to start. And so we're opening the property up at eight and people can come out and walk around in the lavender field and walk through the little path and just enjoy our property like we do.
Cool. Thank you. I'm excited.
If I own it, you won't think it's very awesome.
Any other elected official comments? Meeting is adjourned at seven forty five PM.